I'm going to call to order the Tuesday, January 2nd, 2018, meeting of the Iredle County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I'd ask you to please bow your head in silent prayer and reflection. Could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Mr. Smith, for the last time, I'm going to ask you if there are any adjustments to the agenda.
There is one adjustment to the agenda, Mr. Chairman, and I believe this is probably best put under appointments to boards and commissions, and that is the board assignments for the upcoming year. These are the task forces and committees and boards that each of you sit on, and you have a copy that's at your seat.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended? So moved. Motion by Commissioner Hap. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those like sign, motion carries unanimously. We will defer the presentation of special recognitions and awards until the closing bell of the meeting this evening. Appointments before the board, there are none. Public hearings, there are none. Administrative matters, would you, is to approve the minutes from the meeting of December 19th, 2017. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, we approve the minutes.
Motion by Commissioner McNeely. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those like sign, motion carries unanimously. There are no announcements of any vacancies occurring on any boards or commissions this evening. We do have, however, an appointment under item 10 to a board and commission. It's a request from Planning and Development to extend Mr. Tom Gregory's term on the zoning board of adjustment until case number 171116-4 has concluded. Is there any discussion? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd also like to make a motion that we extend Mr. Tom Gregory's term to allow them to finish the case that they're on, as listed here.
Motion by Commissioner McNeely. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. As opposed, like sign, motion carries unanimously. Is there any unfinished business to come before the board? There is no public comment period until two weeks from now. Is there any new business to come before the board?
We do have the board assignments for the board.
Yeah, okay. The, I believe everyone has the board assignments broken out. I think the only addition that I saw was myself as an alternate on the Statesville Airport Commission. And then there are task force assignments. Since there's been no change in terms of sitting commissioners from last year, I think it's the consensus that we continue to march in our present committee and task force assignments. Is there any further discussion on that? Is there a motion?
Make a motion, we approve those assignments as they exist, Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Bowles. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, like sign, motion carries unanimously. And we'll get to the county manager's report for the last time.
I have nothing to report.
Well, I said the last and best time, okay. All right, well, then, at this point in time, we will circle back to a presentation of a special recognition and awards under item five. As many of you know, our county manager, Mr. Ron Smith, has accepted a new position with the Centralina Council of Governments, which will become effective in about a week and a half, and his last official day of performing duty here in Iredle County as the county manager will be completed on this Friday, the 4th of January, I believe. At this time, what I'd like to do is just to summarize briefly Mr. Smith's tenure here at the county, which began in 1996, a time when I was actually on the board, the planning board, and he came as a planner, step grade one, in 1996, and stayed until 1998. Then he was hired away from us briefly, but he returned in 2000 as the planning supervisor. He was hired away again shortly thereafter and returned again in June of 2007 as the director of Planning and Development. So every time he left, he came back with a promotion. Then, in that position, he was subsequently promoted in September of 2010 to assistant county manager, which was an additional hat he wore in addition to his duties in the planning department. He was appointed as the county manager on July 1st of 2011, and he has served with distinction since that time through a period of significant economic challenges and significant economic opportunity. So he leaves on a high note. What I would like to do is ask members of the commission if they would share any of their thoughts and insights concerning Ron's tenure, and then we'll finish up with a presentation. So initially, it'll start off like the Dean Martin roast. We're all seated here, right? And then we'll do the presentation to close out our meeting this evening. If Ron was not moving on and getting all of this attention, this would have been the shortest meeting ever conducted, at least as long as I've been here. But we will extend and revise our remarks accordingly. So I would open the floor with Mr.
I apologize, I didn't realize the board mentioned comments today during your semi-roasting session downstairs, and I hear there's an interesting department head roasting session coming up later this week. I won't divulge that for those reasons, but I just want to wish you well. Thank you for your service to the county. I can honestly say that you made me a more knowledgeable and better commissioner both times I've been on the board, and I know I've been probably the, let's say, the one that used the most minutes of your phone and caused you the most headaches and stress, but I hope you would leave knowing that you and I made the county better with these other gentlemen sitting here, along with the staff you're leaving behind to help assist us in continuing to serve the end-users of Iredle County. And I mean that sincerely, that we made each other better, and it's like family, the way I look at it, you don't always agree, but you always have the best interest of everybody you're fighting for. So I want to wish you and your family well, and I'm going to be the representative for COG and look forward to working with you, and I'll just push you to get Iredle County as many opportunities as we can, and we ought to have an insight there, and if we don't, I'm going to hold you accountable for that. But congratulations, and thank you for your service, and wish you and your family well.
Mr. McNeely?
Well, we had talked earlier today, and, you know, I've known Ron a lot longer than I thought I did, till I started doing some addin', and he's getting old. I don't care what he says. But luckily, I've stayed the same. It's been a pleasure. I found Ron Smith to be a very admirable man, a very honest and sincere man, and a good friend, not only a good county manager. And I think they said it earlier today, said you can be a bold county manager or an old county manager, but there's no bold, old county managers. Well, there's been times that Ron's been both of those, I guess, to a point. He's getting older, and he's been bold in some of his moves, and I just appreciate all the hard work you've put in to try and make Iredle County a great place to work, to raise a family, to live, to run a business, whatever it is. You've been an integral part of that for the last 20-some-odd years now, and you'll be sorely missed. And I know for one, I'll miss you, and I hope to see you many times down at Centralina. We'll try to, you know, I might actually try to get educated now. They have some programs where they'll send people like me to teach them something, and it might be time to go see them. So maybe this is all for the good, maybe this will all work out, but if there's ever anything I can do or we can do for you, please don't hesitate to call us, and we'll do the same for you. Thank you again, Ron Smith.
Hey, Commissioner Norman?
Ron, I said a few things earlier this afternoon. The thing we all, I think, forgot to do, we thank you for what you've done for Iredle County and for what you've done the whole time you've been here, but when you go home, thank your wife and kids allowing you to do what you've done, because without them, you could not have done that. But thank her for us.
I think we said a lot this afternoon, but Ron, you're a stand-up guy. You are the quiet in the middle of the storm. I think that's an attribute. You need to consider that, and every time you deliberate an issue or discuss it, you kind of try your best to see both sides of an issue, and I think that's a trait that has become lost here of late. But I would like to tell you that I do wish you the best, and you will be sorely missed, but I want to encourage you that nobody on their deathbed ever said they wished they'd spent more time at the office. So put your fan, put God first and family second, and all this business stuff will fall right in place. Thank you, sir.
Ron, 17 years of service to Iredle County, and that's paid service. We expect a return on that investment in your new position with COG, and truly, you know, the reason that he was sought after was not only his personal characteristics, but they could see the changes, the trajectory of Iredle County in terms of its economic development, of it being on the forefront of many of the counties that are struggling. And a lot of that is due to the efforts of not only Ron, but all of our county employees who he has so ably led. When I came on the commission three years ago, I was new to the board and new to the chairmanship, and so I relied very heavily on Ron to orient me as to all the departments and all the moving pieces, and what he was able to do was to really manage change in a way that I think has postured our workforce and our county for a great deal of success in the future. For the first four years that he was county manager, we were still dealing with the lingering effects of a severe economic recession, as everyone knows. Unemployment was north of 6%. Tax revenues were down. County services were basically having to be maintained and doing more with less. And so Ron, in conjunction with our finance department and the board, previous boards, had done a phenomenal job in terms of being good stewards of the funds of Iredle County taxpayers and weathered this storm, if you will, in good order. Having come out of it, though, or started to see a glimmer of light, there were an awful lot of projects and other investments in buildings, in our people, in our equipment, that had been deferred because there was no other option during that time. And so during the last, it, Ron has been involved in a way of strategically posturing the county to deliver those services and to be prepared to grow significantly. You can see things coming out of the ground or going down, up and down. We've seen Davis Hospital come down. That was a process that took, you know, two and a half, almost three years of hard work, and it took a weekly effort on behalf of Ron, working through a number of issues with legal counsel, with the owner, with other stakeholders in that whole process. If that had been an easy thing to do, it would have been done 20 years ago. But it was hard government work, and it was done with a significant amount of insight, and the end result has been the removal of a blight on the community here, and the opportunity for Mitchell College to expand by probably a third in terms of their usable space for another campus, sort of on another leg of a triangle, for their public health building to begin with, and future expansion down the road. He led the way in terms of evaluating the construction, design, validation of the jail. That process basically took a hard look at what it was going to be required to meet the needs of our county and our sheriff's department, but not overbuilding, by finding the sweet spot and constructing the size facility and the quality facility that we would need to go forward for the next 30 to 40 years, with the eye towards ultimately being able to expand as needed. So all of that has come to fruition. It's now being worked on, and I do want to give a shout out to David Salibi for his work in overseeing those projects as sort of our in-house project manager for the jail and the public safety building. The public safety building is something that was not on the radar scope three years ago. We went from a concept to design to, you know, a reality of construction, buying property, to be able to provide the EMS services, the communications, the emergency management, the emergency operations center, all under one roof, to provide the facilities and the environment in which these critical departments function. That was going on the entire time. If you can see, there's a theme here, and it's for three years, at least, he has been, you know, spinning plates and keeping balls in the air on numerous projects and initiatives. We have a strategic plan now, where the board has been able to engage on specific issues and to bring other stakeholders around the table, to be able to coordinate with other jurisdictions, and that's where Ron has really come into his own. And that's why I think he's this, that the COG saw in him the ability to work with other organizations, other jurisdictions, all who have their own prerogatives and perspectives, legal, political, financial, and bring people together to achieve synergy and collaborative approaches to achieve common goals that are beneficial to everyone. So our economic development team, which formerly was a, basically a Statesville and Mooresville, northern and southern, effort, has now been unified and is producing, I think, significant results. If you saw at least 400 and some odd jobs have been announced in the last month, you'll see more announced and more projects over the next couple of months. Those things just don't happen overnight. They start in a pipeline, sometimes two years, and have to be worked right along. And once again, Ron has been the day-to-day point person for the board here, coordinating with our economic development team. Our education systems, you know, working with our education boards, the Iredle Statesville Schools, the Mooresville Grade School District, Mitchell College, to say that that is, that whole tenor of engagement has changed, and there is a unified approach to addressing the needs of Iredle County children and the needs of our Iredle County businesses to produce a workforce that can be prepared for the workplace. And that whole effort has ultimately culminated recently in a pathways concept that I think will be unveiled in the next month or two, whereby young people will be able to see at an early age, sixth grade, seventh grade, why they're in school and the skill sets that they need to develop to be able to get good-paying jobs. And by working that workforce development piece, we enhance our economic development prospects because the long pole in the tent for employers today is the workforce. There are jobs that are going begging in many communities because the workforce is not adequately prepared, and we are committed, and our school systems are committed, to changing how we have done business, to be able to work collaboratively with our businesses. And once again, Ron has been in the thick of that entire effort. You know, these initiatives that each of us have been involved in, to put legs on them, you got to have someone sitting in the chair Monday through Friday, interacting with a whole range of stakeholders, and that person has been Ron. And obviously, we're engaged. It's sort of like the difference between the chicken and a pig in breakfast, you know, the chicken's involved, but the pig is committed. Well, he's been committed every day that he's been at work in terms of pursuing all of these initiatives. You look at the opiate problem that is nationwide in terms of putting together a task force in conjunction with Vice Chairman Bowles and Commissioner Norman, and our public health task force has been ahead of the power curve in terms of recognizing that you need to Task Force has been ahead of the power curve in terms of recognizing that you need to have a multi-pronged, multidisciplinary approach. It's not siloed by organizations, but has some horizontal integration about all these different governmental entities, businesses, healthcare providers and all to be able to address this opioid epidemic head-on. And once again, in the thick of that fray has been Ron Smith. So to make a long story short, there's been a lot of stuff going on. And you don't see that day-to-day in headlines because most of it takes a year or two or three to come to fruition. But this board, in conjunction with Ron's ability to energize and communicate to the staff what it is our intent is, you know, we've been able to accomplish great things. Finally, he's, I've kidded him about this before, but, you know, we're all businesses and government going through a transition in terms of our workforce between a baby boomer generation that is retiring, like most of the gray beards sitting here, and a younger generation, a millennial generation, that is motivated and reacts differently than us organizational baby boomers. Well, he's neither fish nor fowl. He's Generation X. He's right in the middle. He's got to know how to work with both, how to, you know, take what us old organizational baby boomers are comfortable with and want to accomplish and translate that into meaningful work for millennials who are just motivated by different priorities. But they're altruistic and they're hard-working if they're motivated. And so it takes a different kind of management style. And in working with our department heads and supervisors, he's ensured that in our strategic planning process, it's not just us up here thinking big visions or whatever, but it's translated into reality on the ground and that there's a good feedback process or feedback loop there so that people can understand that they can make an impact no matter what job they have and position they hold within the county. So that's a culture change. And Ron, you just managed that with a great deal of grace and effectiveness. So it's tough to see him go. But, you know, the mark of a great leader is that he surrounds himself with great people who can get things done, that understand intent and can pick up the ball and run with it. And that's what Ron has done, you know. Beth Jones was hired to be the deputy county manager several years ago, and they've worked as a team. When I came on board, it was basically half the departments reported to Beth, half the departments reported to Ron. To get these bigger issues addressed, though, Ron could not be involved in day-to-day supervision of departments. So eventually, you know, we're trying to work him out of that so that he could engage with the external stakeholders, those other boards and mayors, and to accomplish these larger goals. So Susan Robertson, our very talented finance director, has recently moved up to the assistant county manager and took off the plate that direct day-to-day reporting that Ron had to deal with. And Ben Steichlether, who came over from CATS, has worked with him in terms of implementing our strategic plans. So Ron has had a great team surrounding him, and Deb Alfred is our finance director. Great team surrounding him. So the good thing about Ron is that he has mentored and supported and given enough direction, but not micromanaged, that whole process so that now, as he steps away, the day-to-day operation of the county is not going to be impacted one whit because he has surrounded himself and cultivated a great team. So that's a testament to, you know, a leader's ability to affect organizational change and have that impact continue after they're gone, because everybody has to leave eventually. So I just want to, I just hit the wave tops as far as the things he's been involved in. But I wanted to give you a sense of the scope and the impact that Ron has had. And it will be missed, but it will continue on. And then we will have the opportunity for Ron to also be, as has been noted, in his new position at Central Illinois Council of Governments to continue to benefit Iredal County in the region writ large. And finally, as mentioned by Commissioner Norman, you know, no person can do all of that stuff without the support of their family. We've mentioned on many occasions, any public servant who goes above and beyond, you know, the strength of our county is our citizens and our employees. But the strength of our employees is their family because they could not put in the hours and do what they do but for the steadfast support of family members who put up with the fact that they're gone for evening meetings or miss the workshop or a commissioner retreat on a weekend and miss the games and all of that. But, so I want to give a shout out electronically, because I know they're watching, to Catherine and his children, Eli, Lucy, and Ryder, for the support that they've given to Ron these many years. So at this time, I think I'll just let you respond with a few remarks and then we'll just do the presentation, grip and grin, and then adjourn.
Well, I'm humbled by your comments. I really am. And I had a, you know, an introduction to some of this at the reception this afternoon, but it didn't hit me till I'm sitting here in my last meeting. So a little bit emotional, more than I thought, Ben, that I would be. But I am, I'm humbled and I very much appreciate it. Appreciate the leadership and the guidance and friendship that you all have provided to me, the leadership for friendships and guidance that I've gotten from the staff. We work as a very tight team and, you know, Rita included. And a lot, I've been busier than I thought I was over the last three years. But, you know, that's all, there's a lot of people who contribute to those types of projects. But you know what? We're in a, we're in a good place right now, I think. You know, this county is really moving in a great direction and, you know, accomplishing some major, significant and relevant projects, you know, that that's going to continue. I don't see that ending from my seat. And hopefully I can help from a regional level and continue to be part of Iredal County and not just the Central Illinois region. So it's been an honor. I never, I never thought, when I first came to Iredal County in 1996, that I would end up leaving as the county manager. And that has truly been, it's been an honor over the last almost, well, six and a half years to hold this position. It's meaningful. It, you know, really, we're all a part of history. And what we're doing is all a part of history and it's, we're doing good things. And I'm very proud of you all as board, I'm proud of the staff, and I'm proud that I'm leaving at a time where I'm not holding you or leaving you out to dry on anything. We've accomplished a lot of good things. We're at the next step on a lot of our projects. And I think that, you know, it's not, not everybody's going to look at me leaving as a good thing, but at least it's, you know, it's not a bad time, at least in my opinion. So thank you, gentlemen, for everything. Thank you, Lisa, for your guidance. Told Bill Pope today that, thanked him for a lot of things, but one of those things was Lisa, because Lisa's been very good for me personally. Rita, David, Ben, Deb, Beth, Susan, everyone, thank you very much. You know, the five out there are probably the ones I work with the closest and, you know, thank you for being here.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say one thing to sum up what everybody said, and I think all of our goals in life is to leave any organization better than we found it. And I think it's safe to say, after hearing all the comments today from previous commissioners, retired staff, current staff, and existing board members, I think we can say you're leaving us, leaving Iredal County and the manager's job better than the day you found it. So thank you for that.
Now, amen to that. I do want to give a shout out to Mr. A.J. Doud, who's in the audience. Good to see you and...
Happy New Year, everybody.
Happy New Year.
And is there any further business to come before the commission? Here we go. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Make most we adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Motion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If there's a like sign, we are adjourned.